Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Excuse me. Chairman, proceeding with the presentation of testimony on agenda items, we have received thirty requests from individuals who wish to offer testimony on agenda items. Shall we proceed?
Thank you. Before the clerk calls up our first testifier, the Chair would like to set the parameters for those providing testimony to the council. We welcome anyone wanting to provide testimony this morning. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes on any of the items posted on today's agenda. When your name is called, please advance to the podium, state your name for the record. If you represent a group or organization, please so state the name of that group or organization as well. A lighting system on the podium is there to assist you with your testimony. At the start of your comments, the green light will be lit. At the two-minute-thirty-second mark, the yellow light will be lit, letting you know you have thirty seconds to conclude. And at the end of three minutes, the red light will be lit, letting you know you will need to stop. If you need an additional minute may be provided to you to complete your remarks. And for those of us with cell phones or other noise-making devices, this would be a good time to please turn them off or set them on the silent mode. The quorum in this chamber will be maintained at all times. Mr. Clerk, call up our first testifier, please.
The first person to testify is Bruce Oatway, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty seven, followed by Nicole Brown.
That's a hard act to follow. Well, another little more serious note here, but not unconnected to the previous proceedings, is my name is Bruce Oatway, and I'm a teacher on the island and a musician, and I've worked at the DOE and Kamehameha. And I encourage you today to pass the resolution here, the amendment, to label our food, GMO It is connected to what we just saw, the hula and the spirit of Maui and Hawaii, because Hawaiians, in the most part, have gone to court to fight for Kahlo. And so it's connected to the culture that we don't change the food. I know there's a lot of issues here, and I've been here before, and so much of the information's already been passed on to you, and I'm sure you've read it all, so I don't want to reiterate what's already been discussed. But the issue at hand here is, basically, we want GMO food labeled, and the central issue to that is that we need free choice. Everybody wants free choice. And I think it is incumbent upon the Maui representatives of the people to give us free choice. It, in my opinion, loosely speaking, it couldn't hurt anyone politically to support and show that they care about the people of their constituency. And it certainly can't hurt our health. It doesn't have any financial impact, as far as I know, except possibly the impact upon donations by Monsanto to certain political entities. And in my research, I was shocked to find that the head of the Agriculture Department of Hawaii had received twenty thousand dollars, actually, from Monsanto recently. Let us just say that we, as concerned citizens, really want you, our representatives, to make the right choice for us and give us that free choice. So I thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm honored to have addressed this important and critical issue. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oatway. Mr. Clerk?
The next person to testify is Nicole Brown, testifying on County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty seven, followed by Susan Jensen.
Good morning, council. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'll make it short and sweet. I know you've heard lots about this topic already. I am a nutritional therapy practitioner. I believe everyone has a right to know what is in the food they're eating. Our bodies thrive on nutrients created by nature, not on mutant nutrients created in a lab by a profit-hungry biotech company. As I'm sure you have heard in previous testimonies and will continue to hear today, that many countries have mandatory labeling, and GMOs are flat-out banned in many other countries. I ask you today to please approve this resolution and give people the choice of whether or not to eat genetically-modified organisms. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Susan Jensen, testifying on Bill fifty-six and County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Joel Kimmel.
Aloha. The Hawaii Health Department knew in the 1980s that Oahu's milk supply was contaminated with heparin, one hundred times over the legal limit, for over two years. They only stopped it when forced to with a lawsuit that they lost. The Hawaii Health Department director declared in 1971 that cane field burning was hazardous to human health and ordered HCNS to stop burning within two years. He was fired, and the order was never enforced. Here are excerpts from the 1984 EPA cane smoke study that it took an appeal of the Freedom of Information Act to get and that the Maui News refused to ever publish. Evidence from Louisiana, Florida, Sweden, Brazil, Australia, and India shows that cane smoke causes lung cancer. The silica in the smoke acts like asbestos. No symptoms may be noticed until lung cancer mesothelioma sets in. Cane smoke can also cause allergic attacks and asthma. The following chemicals were found in cane smoke on Maui by the US EPA. Atrazine and Amitrin, it affects our liver's ability to function. Benzopyrene, exposure to these polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons has resulted in increased mortality from lung cancer. Hexanol, a solvent, has caused lethargy and narcosis in humans, produces irritation of eyes and mucous membranes, may be metabolized in the body to neurotoxic hexanidiol. Phenol, very toxic, a general protoplasmic poison which is toxic to all cells. The safest viewpoint is to regard any amount of phenol as dangerous. Some symptoms, burning pain in mouth and throat, white necrotic lesions in mouth and throat, thirty-two other symptoms are listed. Methylphenol, very toxic, about the same as phenol. Toluene, methylbenzene, moderately toxic. Exposure to vapor causes prominent irritation of the respiratory tract. Symptoms include central depressant effects, muscle paralysis, nausea, vomiting. Napfen, moderately to very toxic. Prolonged inhalation produces nausea, vomiting, and disorientation, irritating to eyes and skin. Prolonged exposure has caused cataracts. Benzene group, chronic exposure of humans to low levels, causes anemia and leukemia. Bone marrow toxicity, the major root of human exposure is inhalation. Hydrogens, reduces sperm production. There's a lot more, I don't have time. And still, the Health Department issues the burning permit. They're negligent and corrupt in their handling of this issue. Why should we trust them when they say the water is safe? Also, a Department of Health environmental specialist told me he received a call from a doctor from Maui Memorial joking that cane burning was job security. The age-poco-well issue, you've tested for three or four chemicals, what about the twenty-five others that the sugar industry admits to using? I need one more minute, please.
One minute.
HCNS has been allowed to use the sky as a garbage dump, six hundred tons of particulates per burn. They poison our air, land, bodies, water, and oceans, and now they're trying to shove their toxic water down our throats. In an issue with this magnitude of extremely toxic carcinogens, your only concern when voting should be the public health issue.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Clerk?
The next person to testify, Joel Kimmel, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Loretta Hughes.
Aloha. My name's Joel Kimmel, and wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to be concerned about the safety of our food supply, if it wasn't at risk? Why are GMOs labeled in Europe and not here? Why do food producers leave out GMO ingredients in the foods they send to Europe, yet they put them in our foods? And is the resistance to labeling because the companies who are involved in GMOs know that products, if they were labeled and that they were containing GMOs, no one would buy them? And so I really urge you to allow us the choice and to label GMO foods. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Loretta Hughes, testifying on County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Claire Kellerman.
My name is Loretta Hughes. I've lived on Maui over forty years. I was going to talk on the misuse of corporate power on this issue about labeling GMOs, but my heart changed my mind. I believe in love, not hate. We're all equally God's children, divine beings struggling with our human existence. I don't know all the motives behind the production of GMOs, but it probably started out with the right intentions. It's hard for individuals to admit their mistakes, probably more so for corporations, but the process has gone awry. Mistakes have been made, or this hearing wouldn't be necessary. The people of this country have a growing distrust of corporations, as demonstrated by the occupation of Wall Street and similar events now supported by unions and students. If the GMO-producing corporations would agree to the labeling of their products, the public would take notice. It would be a positive step toward healing the gap between corporations and the people of this country. Isn't it time for cooperation instead of confrontation? Don't miss this opportunity to support choice, support GMO labeling. Thank you. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Claire Kellerman, testifying on County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven and Bill number fifty-six, followed by Yo Kobayashi.
Thank you. Well, the testifier advanced to the podium. The Chair would like to recognize the presence of Member White, who have joined us. Good morning, Mr. White.
Good morning, Chair.
Aloha. Thank you for letting me share today. I've lived on Maui six years, and first I'll speak to permaculture is what I'd like to bring to all of us today, to be aware that permaculture design was created and is based on observing nature and the wisdom of nature. And permaculture stands for permanent culture or permanent agriculture, and we really can't have one without the other. And what I've learned by going around the world to the top eco-villages on the planet that have been in place for thirty to forty years, including walking onto the land in Scotland at Fintorn, if any of you have heard of it, it's an amazing community. And the thing that I noticed that was different was the intelligence and the cooperation there between humans, and I could actually feel it in the soil, the bees, the birds, everything there. And the reason I want to bring it up is because it informed me of something that I missed out in my family. I missed out in my very successful, powerful family. You know, the idea that humans, babies, children, that our hearts and our minds and nature are all one. And I really find it important that I have the opportunity to know what I'm eating, that my friends who are breastfeeding know what they're putting in their bodies that's going into their babies' bodies. It's really crucial to me. And what I've found in ten years as a certified permaculture designer, traveling the world, going to Italy, Ireland, Scotland, Egypt, and meeting with people all over the world that are absolutely against any genetically-modified anything entering their bloodstream or their environment or their farms, there is no way to coexist with GMOs and live the kind of deep, intrinsic, holistic health that I myself personally stand for and have actually healed myself by studying nature and by studying permaculture and gotten away from the lies that my family tried to perpetuate or that science or that corporations tried to perpetuate. And I got all sorts of facts and studies that prove that we are meant to live in a way that honors nature and that honors our intuition and that honors mothers and fathers to have the right to serve their children, what nature would have us serve them, which is what's good for their health. And I think we've seen enough proof. I think we're seeing enough proof in our children's behavior issues that they're saying need drugs and pills. How about if we just nurture the soil? How about if we just make sure our air is clean? How about if we just honor the fact that the water from the sky that comes down through the Ina, down through the creeks to the ocean, is pure, as pure as nature intended? How about if we label our food and allow our population to maintain their humanity and eat what it is that they intend to eat, which is not poisoned and not genetically-modified? I have six. I've gone over now. Thank you very much for your time. Aloha.
Yeah, Ms. Kellerman, you also wanted to provide testimony on Bill fifty-six.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, too.
So you've got three minutes to provide your additional testimony.
Thanks. Awesome. All right. Water. Thank you. Okay, so I support Ellie Cochran, and I thank you so much for bringing this opportunity. Again, permaculture is all about mutually beneficial choices and relationships, so with that in mind, I don't think there's a need for argument so much as just providing us with the opportunity to have water meters get issued and allow also not to risk the children using the water that is contaminated, but rather to send it through proper filtration so that it's safe for agricultural use. And so I support Ellie Cochran's proposed motion, and the suggestion is to increase up-country capacity by using one million gallons per day more stream water and use this capacity increase as backup for Puakalua well and be able to issue meters. Maui County has an agreement with A and B to use up to ten million gallons a day of stream water. Average use is four to six million gallons per day. Additional water would be available. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Kellerman. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify is Yo Kobayashi, testifying on County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Cheryl Roberts.
Good morning, council members and chairman. My name is Yo Kobayashi. I am here to support the GMO bill. Today, I'd like to share some of the findings on the cost implications of labeling to One, two, three, four, five dollars for zero-point-two-five percent price increase per person per year. This figure is derived from five major studies conducted in Quebec, Canada, I'm sorry, New Zealand, Australia, the UK, and Oregon, in which the studies did not have a corporate interest. And with the exception of Oregon, the studies were commissioned by governments. Now, in contrast, where studies were conducted with corporate interests involved, excuse me, the expected price increase was one-hundred-eight dollars for three-point-seven percent price increase, again, per person per year. So no corporate interest, you have five dollars expected price increase, corporate interest over one-hundred dollars. But ultimately, the real comparison should be between the consequences of not labeling versus the cost of labeling. What is the potential impact of not labeling to families, potentially thousands of medical bills and a lot of emotional stress? And for government, billions, if not more, potentially, and loss of consumer confidence? All the while, if the problem needs to be contained, we cannot, we cannot, because we cannot, it cannot be tracked, because there is no labeling. So please, vote to label. First of all, it's going to be a whole lot less than what the companies will tell you. And more importantly, the repercussions of not labeling far, far outweigh the minimal cost of labeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Chair? Mr. Kobayashi?
Yes.
Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kobayashi, for your enlightenment. I'm just curious if you were able to see how they justify that one-hundred-and-eight per person per year additional cost?
Yes, that was actually based off of the average of two studies, and the main one was the Oregon study that was commissioned by a group called Coalition Against Costly Labeling Bill to defeat Measure Twenty-seven in Oregon. And actually, I sent that to the council, and that study was flawed in its conclusion, but nonetheless, that study concluded that the price increase would be about one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars per person. The main, well, let's start with the flaw, and it's a little technical, and I went through the detailed math, and I sent you the calculation behind it. But the assumption was that every single product that would need to be labeled would have one-hundred percent of the ingredients as GMO. So whether you have a soda as a GMO product with five percent, it assumed it would be one-hundred percent. That was inherent in the math that they did. You have a cereal, one-hundred percent GMO ingredients. So the full cost production associated with labeling would be passed on to the consumer. So there was a major flaw in that calculation. But the other one was the, in terms of logistics, what would have to be segregated, but they assumed that basically everything, all the products, would have to be segregated. So that was a major contributor to the cost. There's a couple other major assumptions, but those are the two big assumptions.
Thank you, Mr. Kobayashi, for your time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Thank you, Mr. Kobayashi. Mr. Clerk?
Cheryl Roberts, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Kathy Corcoran.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Cheryl Roberts, and I'm also here to ask you to label GMOs. I'm a mom here on Maui, and I do my best to do that job to my best ability, and I just would rather not be a guinea pig. I'd rather my children weren't guinea pigs, I'd rather you weren't and your children weren't also. Guinea pig is really a kind of a fuzzy, cute name, because really, it's an experiment, and usually experiments are done on rats, and I would rather not my children be experimental rats either. But even rats are given the dignity of purpose of being kept track of, and unless we label these things, no one's going to know thirty years down the road. It would be nice if everybody who believed in genetically-modified organisms could eat that, and people that don't want to do that could not do that, and in thirty years, we could compare grandchildren, and if everybody's grandchildren are just as healthy, I would love that. I would like to eat that yummy, crummy stuff. You know, it's convenient and it's cheap. But at this point, I just feel like we have the right to the information, and I would like the freedom to make that choice, and I trust that you folks will do the right thing. Aloha. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Kathy Corcoran, testifying on County Communication number eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Kathleen Figuera.
Aloha, Kako. Oh, Kathy Corcoran, Ko'inoa. My name is Kathy Corcoran, No'aua'oi Lahaina. I live in Lahaina, and I've been trying to avoid products made with GMOs since the nineties, when they started. In 1993, two years before I moved here, I learned about genetic engineering of foods and about GMOs from some university sources. Researchers were inserting DNA from pigs, fish, and scorpions, among other things, into food plants. By 1994, GMO foods made it to supermarket shelves. The GMO foods the stores carry are corn and products containing corn, soybeans and products containing soybeans or their extracts, some canola oils and milk from cows treated with RBGH, which stands for recombinant bovine growth hormone, which is a genetically engineered growth hormone. Recently, some sugar beets are now GMO too, which affects all kinds of candy and desserts. And Hawaiian papayas have been genetically engineered since 1995. I just moved here then, and I had to give up paga already. So besides the unknown health consequences of GMO foods, which are many, there are religious concerns for many people as well. Remember, we're talking about DNA from pigs, fish, and scorpions being put into food. Jews and Muslims cannot eat this food because they do not eat pork. Hindus and Seventh-day Adventists cannot eat this food because they are vegetarians, as am I. And members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints are strongly encouraged by their doctrine and covenants to avoid meat, fish, and fowl. So considering the importance of knowing what we are buying and eating, I urge you to pass this resolution for labeling foods with GMOs for the state legislative package. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, Ms. Corcoran. Mr. Clerk?
Kathleen Figuera, testifying on Bill number fifty-six, followed by Gregory Figuera.
Good morning. I'm Kathleen Figuera, and I'm from up-country Maui, and I agree with the bill to use the water from the Hamakua Poco Wells so that more water meters can be issued to up-country residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Figuera. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Gregory Figuera, testifying on Bill fifty-six, followed by Megan Bryn.
Good morning, Chair and councilmen, councilwomen. Today, I'm here with my sister and our family. We have a family subdivision that we're trying to make in Makawal, and we're like nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven on the water list, and we've been there for quite a few years. So we're here to ask you to please open Hamakua Wells and provide water for the families of up-country so that we can get our homes built for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, Mr. Figuera. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Megan Bryn, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Gina Weaver.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing my testimony. This morning, I want to tell you about my personal journey with food. I am thirty years old now and born in California and now a Maui resident, and so grateful, love Maui. And at age twenty-three, I was in college at San Francisco State University and suddenly had numbness start in my body and spread in my body, and shortly thereafter was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis, which is an autoimmune disease, which means that my own immune system attacks my body. Excuse me, it's emotional for me. I tried everything. I went to UCSF. I was cared for by the head of neurology. I signed up for all the studies to get free healthcare and free MRIs, and everyone told me there it was getting worse, and I would watch people in their walkers and in their wheelchairs, and they would hand me pamphlets about what to expect. Thank God, thank God, I ran into people who told me, "Seek nutrition counseling." I tried everything. I spent every dime I had to put myself in debt, because all of a sudden, the most important thing was feeling good in my body. I was in college, and I could barely walk. All of this out of nowhere, this just came out of nowhere. So after doing the whole Western medic, injecting myself with interferon, getting worse, going acupuncture, doing everything, shamanistic healing, you name it, I tried it, because what else did I have? That was my only choice I had. I was looking at the rest of my life. I was looking at the rest of my life. And so someone came into my life that said, "Seek nutrition counseling." I didn't even know what that meant. I was shopping at the supermarket that was closest to my house where I could afford the groceries. That's what made sense to me. I was raised with a family who shopped at Costco because, you know what? We didn't have a lot of money to go to the fancy place that's 40 minutes from our house. I get it. I totally get it. But when I changed my diet, my health changed. My health changed so dramatically. It's a miracle. You'll see on my testimony, my email address is Little Miss Miracle. Because I feel that food is my medicine. And it's not even a feel it. I know it. I've seen it. I, I experience it on a daily basis. When I don't eat well, like when I travel, and I just eat whatever is on my plate, literally, I'll tell you, I went to Spain one year and ate whatever food at the restaurant. I can't be so picky. I'm on vacation, right? Just go with the flow, have fun. I'm sorry, I'll finish. I ate whatever I want. The left side of my body went numb, like that. It's so immediate for me, which is a blessing. I'm very sensitive. But it's a direct correlation. Food is my medicine, or it's my poison. Thank you so much for listening. I sincerely pray and hope that this gets resolved in a good way for all. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Jean Weaver, testifying on County Communication 11-257, followed by Lauren Pang.
Aloha, council members and audience. Thank you for, I'm just so glad that, that our government supports this type of testimony, public testimony, because there's so many places in our life that we're feeling, we're getting run over, and we don't have a choice. You know, the feds are not helping us. They're, they're supporting the big ag and the big businesses. And, and it's such a delight to be able to come here and know that we're being represented. I, I really think our council lady here that's got this on the, on, in front of us today, I really urge you to get this on the bill so that we can vote about our right to know. If, if there's GMO happening in our products that we're buying, we have a right to know. This test, this last testimony, this, this is so moving for me, because I'm not just, you know, I'm afraid. I want to stand here and say, "I am afraid," not just for myself, but for the children and the mothers and all the people who don't have the education, who don't know, who, this is just being put in front of them for them to consume with no information. Years ago, I went into, it wasn't that many years ago either, a few years ago, I went into a Safeway store, and I said to the manager, I said, "I'd like to know if there's any GMO products in your store." He said, "What is a GMO product?" This is the, the, the manager of the big Safeway store right here on Maui. Now, this is because people don't have an education, and part of the reason they don't have the education is because the information isn't there, and it's, the labeling isn't there. And this is, when people look at that label, they're gonna say, "Is this my choice to eat this or not?" This really is a, a very important subject for me. And I know you guys are getting a lot of information on it, so I'm glad that you're getting your education on it. There's a lot of talk about food safety these days. You know, they want to make bills that we, people are talking about making it so that they're questioning what we're growing in our yard. And yet, these people are not questioned about, about what they're doing? And, and these people are doing it for money. We're doing it for our health and our safety, our everyday livelihood. This is our basic human right to know what we're eating and have a choice with that. And this day and age, we can't all grow our own food and know what that is. So we have to trust these corporations and these governments and these entities that are supposed to be acting in our behalf to make the information known so that we can make our choice. So thank you for having this bill before us. Let's get this on the, on the ballot and get it voted on, and get our right to know, and get this labeled on our food. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Lauren Pang, testifying on County Communication 11-257 and Bill Number 56, followed by Petra Azola.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Lauren Pang. I'm a physician. I will speak as a private citizen. I will speak on the two bills, the labeling and the water. So first, we will do the labeling. You kind of already know my position. I gave the handout, and I want to kind of summarize it, and I wanted to change it a little bit according to Megan's testimony. I took a position quite a long time ago, but two years ago, there was a very strong position by the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. These are 300 MDs and PhDs in the US and Canada. And their position is well documented, and has not even been challenged, let alone refuted. Their position is that physicians are to tell their clients, their patients, that the risk of consuming GM foods is totally unknown. This is based on the precautionary principle. Totally unknown. May be good, may be bad, but who knows? The next item, they say, is that physicians should consider GMOs as a possible source of unusual syndromes, including what you just saw in the previous speaker, Megan. We are warned, that's a very strong statement. Next, they ask that the physicians support independent testing, which has not been done in humans, of the toxicity of GMOs, all of them. And the final thing is, until that is done, there is to be a moratorium on new products, and there is to be labeling on the existing products. No more, no less. Very interesting, their position, because they support it with lots of animal data. The animal data itself is a little bit hard to extract to humans. Men are men, and mice are mice. We see toxic things in mice that's safe in humans, and vice versa. But that widespread, severe, cross-the-board toxicity in animals, including autoimmune diseases, including neurologic diseases, is so alarming that you gotta be a fool to think that you're just gonna skate in and say, "Well, it's very toxic in animals, let's hope it's safe in man." Finally, we have a little problem with our regulators, the FDA. You have previous testimony from me about our little problem with science and the FDA, done by scientists of the FDA. I used to work with the FDA since 1985. The only credible department of the FDA, according to the recent report, was my department, the guys who mess with drugs and vaccines. Okay? So the regulators aren't quite there for you. We have a very strong group now that goes a little beyond my position, and the labeling is just a little piece, because that, it allows people like this who want to try to avoid it, to avoid it, and allows physicians looking at post-marketing products to finally get to the truth of the matter. What's safe, what's not? Is it dangerous? How much? What's the dose? So I just want to end there for questions before I talk about the water.
Go ahead and start your testimony for water.
Okay. The water. I will leave written testimony also on the water, the H. Poco Wells. You know, I will cover three areas: the regulatory agency and their scientists, the science that we are faced with, or the problem of the science, and what are our alternatives? Let me start with the regulatory agency. You know, it wasn't so long ago, several years ago, that we tried to met, well, we had to look at drinking water up-country. C9, there was an additive called C9 zinc phosphate, added to control lead. For those of you here, you remember how that turned out? We were challenged by the state. We were challenged by the EPA. 500 other communities use it, no problem. You guys are strange. As far as I'm concerned, we were correct. We were correct. C9 was removed, there was a side effect. The effect of C9 was paradoxical. Remember, Professor Mark Edwards came from Virginia Tech. That was us. It seemed to be okay. We didn't make a big issue. On my testimony, you will see how Mark Edwards addressed the same issue in Washington DC. In Washington DC, Mark Edwards, our dear Mark Edwards, you guys had him for questioning, had more problems. Defamation, stonewalling, hidden data, retraction of articles, rehiring of people, inappropriately fired. This was a Senate investigation. It's on my, it's on Wikipedia. The Senate investigation of the EPA and the CDC. Anybody can make a mistake, including our regulatory agencies. But the dangerous ones are those who cover it up, defame the people trying to expose it. And the most dangerous ones are those who are both good and bad. I don't doubt EPA and CDC are terrific sometimes, but you gotta sort that out. So that's my take on the regulatory agencies. What's the issue with H. Poco Well? The science. The problem is combinations. I just came back from all these international meetings. Who cares what meetings? It has been a longstanding issue that chemicals or toxins or pesticides used in combination on the plant, on your apple, in your water, are totally unknown. VN. Who says that? NIOSH. Feds. Who says that? ATSDR. An arm, Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry. CDC. Who says that? Four lawyers from California in Kauai looking at pesticides in combination sprayed on the plant. Read my article, not my article, submission. There is an admission by ATSDR that we should begin to look at the combinations, and we only know the singular ones. Maybe the GAK filters can remove it. But you don't know the level you have to remove it to. I don't think, I'm sure you can remove it, but should we change the filters every minute? Should we put 10 times the amount of filter? What levels are we gonna have to achieve because of combinations of toxicity, which we haven't studied? What's the possibility of combinations? The toxicity. It might be antagonistic. One might block the other. It might be additive, or it might be synergistic. Well, what do you mean synergistic? When you add A and B, it's worse than the A or B. Oh, are you trying to frighten us, Dr. Pang? Absolutely not. Let's just say drug A affects your left eye, drug B affects your right eye. You know, you can drive with your right eye alone, you can drive with your left eye. But in combination, you can't drive, okay? The combination is horrifyingly more toxic than either one alone. You look at the H. Poco Wells, there's not just two combinations, there's many. And they're breakdown products, which sometimes are more toxic than what you put in. The final thing I want to talk about is the alternative. We could just go ahead and try and hope for the best, worrying that someday, somebody might come up with new levels for combinations. But you have an alternative. You have the surface water. We know how to treat surface water. Yes, it's a little problematic how much chloramine or chlorine you put in, but you have that. Trade it out. Let us drink our surface water processed when we send it up country, and let's use the H. Poco Well for ag. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you, Dr. Pang.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify is Petra Azola, testifying on County Communication 11-257 and Bill Number 56, followed by Jen Warren.
Aloha, Kako. Good morning. My name is Chetana Petra Azola. I've been a Hawaii resident since 1986. This month marks my 25th anniversary here. I'm here to urge you to please allow the, or vote for the labeling of GMO foods. We are part of nature as men, and I have an ethical problem with us playing god, but that's just one little point. I find that a lot of people are still not really familiar with what genetically modified food means, so let me just quickly read you the World Health Organization's definition of genetically modified organisms. Genetically modified organisms can be defined as organisms in which the genetic material, the DNA, has been altered in a way that does not occur naturally. The technology is often called modern biotechnology or gene technology, sometimes also recombinant DNA technology or genetic engineering. And this is what is important, the following sentence. "It allows selected individual genes to be transferred from one organism into another, also between non-related species." Now, should we alter our own genes by intermixing with animals, possibly? I mean, this is just a little ethical question. I feel that we, as the people, have the right to know what we put in our bodies. I find it my personal responsibility, as well as my freedom, to make an informed choice. I can only make a choice when I'm in the supermarket if I am able to have a label that tells me there is genetically modified organisms in this product or not. I find myself in the store these days, I read everything because it is hidden. It is hidden in corn syrup and other things. So in order to make an informed choice, we need to be able to have the labeling. It could affect us generations down the line. We need to think of our children, grandchildren, and possibly seven generations or longer down the line. There have not been any long-term studies on humans. Now, let me give you a little bit of an idea of the rat and mice and rabbit studies that have been done. Mind you, these animals have a shorter lifespan. Therefore, we can see how it can affect over generations. Red's fat GM insecticide-producing maize over three generations suffered damage to liver and kidneys and showed alterations in blood biochemistry. Old and young mice fed with GM insecticide-producing maize showed a marked disturbance in immune cell, I'm sorry, in immune system cell populations and biochemical activity. Rabbits fed GM soya showed enzyme function disturbances in kidney and heart. Rats fed GM tomatoes developed stomach alterations. And I could go on. Now, these studies come from the UK, but I believe the mice and the rat are the same as here. So please move forward with the labeling of GMO foods so that we have the freedom to choose what we put in our bodies.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Clerk?
Jen Warren, testifying on County Communication 11-257, followed by Nancy Sundberg.
Good morning. My name's Jennifer Warren. Thanks for hearing our testimony today. Third time's a charm. Keeping my fingers crossed. So what I'd like to discuss today is the art of public relations. Public relations is about the management of perceptions. Public relations is not about truth. Public relations is what happens when the facts run into the predisposed hope of the company or the person who is trying to propagate a particular point of view. So one that's more humorous, but definitely does bring forward the point, is that a specific PR consultant, he was brought in, he worked with the rendering plants that disposed of the spoiled leftovers from slaughterhouses. He came up with the phrase "hyper-motivated complaintant," HMC for short, to characterize people who objected to the odors that emanate from his clients' factories. In other words, it smelled, and they noticed it. But they had a problem. They were reacting abnormally, suffering from a form of Parkinsonian madness. This is rotten meat. The US EPA also reached similar conclusions as it worked to overcome public acceptance barriers to its disposal plans for sewage sludge. The main problem it concluded was the widely-held perception of sewage sludge as malodorous, disease-causing, or otherwise repulsive. There's an irrational component to public attitudes about sludge, which means that public education will not be entirely successful. I mean, come on, it's sludge. It's rotting meat. We know it smells. Now, I don't think that having a malodorous misunderstanding is really the issue. This same principle is what's being applied with GMOs. The facts are not matching what they would like to see, so they attack anyone who puts out studies to the opposite point. A professor who has for past, the past 40 years, has been working with plant pathogens. He had been contacted by veterinarians all over the country who were noticing that their herds were having very strange behavior, as well as having plant, a lot of plant problems in the fields. So I quote directly from his letter to the USDA. "For the past 40 years, I've been a scientist in the professional and military agencies that evaluate and prepare for natural and man-made biological threats, including germ warfare and disease outbreaks. Based on this experience, I believe the threat we are facing from this pathogen is unique and a high-risk status. In layman's terms, it should be treated as an emergency." What he's referring to is a pathogen that is showing up in fields treated with Roundup Ready products. It's the glyphosate, glyphosate. It's causing the soil to change, it's causing the plants to change, it's causing the animals to change. But again, this is not convenient for the PR industries who would like to have their industry and their product show up as spotless. But, and the facts are the facts. For example, with one of the herds, 450 of 1,000 pregnant heifers were fed wheat lich, they experienced spontaneous abortions. Over the same period, another 1,000 heifers from the same herd that were raised on hay had none. The 450 that had the abortions, there was high concentrations of the pathogen that was confirmed on the wheat lich, which is likely fed using the glyphosate. So in essence, we don't have human studies, but we do have the animal studies. As much as they would like to show there's not a problem, there is a problem. The problem is showing up all over the place. It's showing up with super- It's showing up with super weeds, and three years' time, it's gone from 3,000 sites to 30,000 sites. 2 million to 11 million acres. So if this is happening to the plants and animals, what's happening to us? Please label. We need the label to track the data, use the data to prove or disprove the truth, or whether or not this actually stinks as bad as it seems. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Warren. Mr. Clerk.
Nancy Sundberg, testifying on county communication 11-257, followed by Colette Evans.
My name is Nancy Sundberg, and today is the third time I'm giving testimony to support the legislation to label GMO products in the state of Hawaii. I've made many points in previous testimonies. Today, what I'd like to point out is I think there's a pervasive idea that because they're already in the food supply, that they've already been tested, being approved by the FDA, that they're already been, they've already been approved and tested safe. That's actually not the case. The FDA has declared that GMO foods are essentially the same through the doctrine of substantial equivalence, in which two foods are declared enough alike that they are essentially the same. Concept of substantial equivalence has not been defined by science or agreed on by legislators. How altered a substance must be before it is considered different remains vague, making the concept useful to streamlining approval, but it is not a substitute for science. The FDA is not a scientific organization. As a result of this doctrine, they do not require food safety testing. Anyone who claims that the FDA has already tested GMO foods for safety is not aware that GMO food, foods have actually not been tested by the FDA, and not adequately tested by the industry. The industry claims that GMO mutations are natural. There's nothing natural about GMOs. Forcing gene families to cross when they never would in nature is not natural in the sense of naturally occurring. Really, you look at all this stuff, and it's kind of like science meets the Dukes of Hazard. That 80s TV show where they decide they live in Hazard County, and Bo and Luke Duke are gonna drive their car over a lake blindfolded, and then they wind up in a ditch. It's this mentality of really a lack of responsibility. And I hope that Maui is not on its way to becoming Hazard County. How about Roundup Ready soy? There's a very informative documentary called "The World According to Monsanto." I really recommend it, where you see a field of GMO soybeans drenched in Roundup. You don't even need scientific proof for that, just the sentence and just the actual thing of Roundup being on food. That's enough to convince you to not eat it, but if you're not convinced, in the next scene, it shows the farmer serving that food to his family. Genes from Roundup Ready soy has been known to transfer to bacteria in the mouth and gut of humans. This is called horizontal gene transfer, and shows the potential for bacteria to take up antibiotic-resistant genes. Essentially, we're transferring to ourselves resistance to antibiotics. Bacteria would then become resistant to antibiotics we use to combat disease. I'm almost done, may I finish?
Sure.
And fail to be cured by antibiotics. Other health effects include problems with red, with blood cell, kidney, and liver formation as exhibited by rats fed Monsanto M O N 863 corn. The issue of GMOs and the magnitude of its impact, and potential further impact on the food industry is catastrophic to the food supply and human health. As a consumer, I choose to not eat genetically modified food products. However, because they are not labeled, I have to call manufacturers to find out whether or not their products contain GMOs. All GMO food products should be labeled. The legislation and regulation regarding food must be forward-thinking and all-inclusive. I'd like to thank the members of this council who are in support of this legislation of labeling GMOs, which is in the best interest of all consumers, in that it serves our freedom of choice and right to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Sundberg. Mr. Clerk.
Colette Evans, testifying on county communication 11-257, followed by Deborah Parzek.
Members, following this testimony, we will take a short recess.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing our testimony again this morning. This is also my third time here. I had some, prepared some statements, but I'm gonna go ahead and start with some news that showed up in this year in the media. I'm gonna read directly from an article. Till now, oh, this is regarding, sorry, the labeling of GMOs and please supporting that. Till now, scientists and multinational corporations promoting GM crops have maintained that BT toxins possess no danger to human health as the protein breaks down in the human gut. But the presence of this toxin in human blood shows that this does not happen. Scientists from the University of Sherbrooke, Canada, have detected the insecticidal protein Cry-1A-B circulating in the bloodstream of pregnant and non-pregnant women. They have also detected the toxin in fetal blood, implying it could pass to the next generation. The research paper has been peer-reviewed and accepted for publication in the Journal of Reproductive Toxicology. The study covered 30 pregnant women and 39 who had come for a tubectomy to the university in Quebec. None of them had worked or lived with a spouse working in or with pesticides. They were all consuming typical Canadian diets that include GM foods such as soybean, corn, and potatoes. Blood samples were taken before delivery for pregnant women and at the tubal litigation for non-pregnant women. Ambilical cord blood sample was done after the birth. So the Cry-1A-B toxin was detected in 93%? Did you get that? 93% and 80% of the maternal and fetal blood samples respectively, and in 69% of test blood samples from non-pregnant women. We were told this couldn't happen by the industry. We were told that this was safe. Do we know? Will the animal studies suggest that we've got a big problem coming down the pike? The big argument that the industry has is that the animal studies cannot be reproduced. I'd like to point out to you that because of the process of GMO propagation, their product is actually not scientifically stable enough to be tested on. Do you understand what I'm saying here? That their product is not stable enough in order for us to properly test it to even know what our future holds. So please listen to the animal studies, please hear what we have to say. The FDA does not have our back, I've talked to you about that before. I've submitted 12 pages to you guys of data about this. Please make sure you have your copy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did not realize that you could sign up twice and talk about the water. Can I say a brief statement about the water?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd just like to say that under the circumstance, there seems to be this false issue going on about whether we would issue water meters versus whether we issue, or you know, we open Hapoko. And there's a solution here. We can issue those water meters, we can keep our family safe. There is some significant issues with that well that we don't begin to understand, and whether it can be purified? Yeah, it can be purified technically. Will it be purified? Do we understand the level it needs to be purified to in order for our safety? Hmm, that's the question at hand. Why are we even? Ellie Cochran has presented a solution to this. It's right before our faces. Please, please, let's only use Hapoko for agricultural purposes. Let's go ahead and bring forth the clean water for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Evans. Members, we're gonna take a very, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess at this time. We will be returning at 10 minutes to 11. Council stands in recess. Council of the County of Maui, regular meeting, October 7, 2011, will reconvene. Mr. Clerk, call up our next testifier.
Next person to testify, Deborah Parzek, testifying on county communication number 11-257, followed by Dave Luborsky.
Hello, I'm Deborah Parzek. I'm very grateful for the information that was just given about pregnant women, so thank you for that. My statement is very brief. I just want to say that I support that all GMO foods should be labeled. As an expectant mother, I want to know exactly what I'm putting in my body and feeding my child. I want to maintain my right to choose what exactly I'm eating. So let's be honest about our foods, label our GMO products, and give people the choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Dave Luborsky, testifying on county communication 11-257, followed by Brian Lehman.
Thank you, council members. I was very moved by the Hula performance and by the honoring of Janice Gog earlier. And in that spirit of recognizing what Maui's about, I would like to say, and in a way, honor the scientists who are working for the corporations that support genetically modified organisms and crops. I think that, you know, they are working to try to understand the secrets of life, and they're putting lots of time and money and energy into this. So I want to honor that. And yet, something has gone wrong, as we can see. And I'll keep it brief, but in an effort to provide a bit more scientific testimony, this is from several years back. There was a scientist in Scotland called Pustai, and he worked for an institute for 35 years before he was, his contract was not renewed. On August 10, 1998, Arpad Pustai of the Rowett Research Institute in Aberdeen, Scotland, appeared on the British TV show World in Action. In the course of the interview, he announced that his experiments showed that rats fed a diet of potatoes expressing a gene coding for a snowdrop sugar-binding protein, that's the snowdrop flower, showed stunted growth and reduced immune function, Enserink Science 281.1184. He also found that they had holes in their intestines. He is further quoted as saying that he would not eat GM foods, and that he found it very, very unfair to use our fellow citizens as guinea pigs, Lee and Tyler, 99. The study made headlines around the world. According to Science's Martin Enserink, the Rowett Institute was flooded with calls from reporters even before the show aired. He quotes Rowett director Philip James saying that "the institute was faced with a mega-crisis we didn't remotely anticipate." James is said to have examined the experiments and found them a total muddle. So after that, Pustai's contract was not renewed, and the whole issue with the experiments of these terrible conditions found in rats after eating genetically modified potatoes was found to be flawed and all that. But after his contract was not renewed, he continued to travel around the world and lecture on his experiments with GM potatoes and rats. So I encourage you also to look on Wikipedia, where you can also find the story on Pustai, and I think it's another example of well-founded scientific research against genetically modified organisms or genetically modified crops. So I'd like to support the bill, the resolution for labeling on Maui, and I trust you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Luborsky. Mr. Clerk.
Brian Lehman, testifying on county communication 11-257, followed by Courtney Brook.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Council members, I'm Brian Lehman. I live here on Maui. I support mandatory labeling of GMOs for two main reasons, which you may have heard. One, a consumer has a basic right to choose. And two, everybody wants it, but nobody's doing anything about it. I'm a mostly organic vegetarian for over half my life already, eating organic even longer. Depleted soils mean depleted bodies. GMOs absolutely threaten my life's blood, although their engineers cannot produce one patent over pollination, photosynthesis, or germination. Also concerning are exploited farmers committing suicide at an astonishing rate in India. A future of animal and plant genes mixed together is not too far-fetched without labeling. So while some are already convinced GMOs are hazardous, and others may feel they're just not sufficiently tested as of yet, for many, the freedom to choose may go well beyond just the safety issue recognized but ignored by the FDA. Poll after poll, ABC, CBS, MSNBC, The New York Times, most recent, a couple from this year, have found vast majorities in favor of mandatory labeling. None below 85%, a couple over 90%. Yet around 90% of corn, cotton, canola, soy, and sugar beets grown in the US are already GMO. So there's disparity between vast majorities of consumers and the amount of these foods being produced if freedom of choice is at issue. Everybody wants it, but nobody's doing anything about it, at least not yet. Why not? Because it's cost prohibitive? One of the fastest-growing food labels is non-GMO verified, and they don't cost anymore, but the GMO cartel spends millions on a ballot measure. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd also make a political argument. Side effects from pharmaceuticals approved by the FDA kill at least 100,000 Americans a year. That's taken as directed. So if that's the accepted rate for medicine, what's acceptable for food, which the FDA asserts has no medical or health benefits? You can't make those claims. So with compulsory, and I just need a couple more seconds, with compulsory coverage now looming, will the FDA, with a corporation that already has a dubious track record in the industry, now make mandatory a food chain without accountability to consumers or the environment? Someone off the grid, but, Mr. Chairman, this is the grid we all need to get off of. And I have 16 copies with documentation. Thank you, and thanks to the sponsor of this measure, and thanks to all who vote for it.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Mr. Clerk.
Courtney Brook, testifying on county communication number 11-257 and bill 56, followed by Paul Keeler.
Good morning, council members, council chair, everyone here today. My name is Courtney Brook. I'm here representing GMO Free Maui Upcountry Sustainability Core Committee and KeepaHulu Community Association. Was really touched by the Hula performance this morning and that you honor the keiki that way, and to see my Victorino up here and giving, you know, your love to the children are keiki. And I hope that that will transfer into the passing and the support of labeling this resolution. I think it's really hard to support a keiki and not support the right to know about the GMOs and the food, because I bet a lot of people in that family aren't familiar with GMOs, and they're serving them to their children because they're not labeled. I hope that every time you eat something, because you are educated, thanks to all the wonderful people that come here to testify, you're very fortunate, you know, because you know, a lot of people don't. So I hope every time that you go to a baseball game and you eat popcorn from, you know, from corn, you eat nachos, or you pop a can of soda, that you're gonna see a big, bright red question mark in your mind's eye, and you're gonna like, be like, whoa, I wonder, it's this GMO? And you're not gonna just forget about it, you're not just gonna pretend that you don't know, you know, because you do. And every time you go to the grocery store, you feed your family, and you buy any product with corn, canola, soybeans, sugar from beet... with corn, canola, soybeans, sugar from beets, which isn't labeled on there, it's potentially GMO, and you've heard enough evidence to question the health of this. At the last hearing, some of you weren't here. Warren Watanabe, who is Executive Director of the Farmers Bureau, the Maui Farmers Bureau, he came to represent the Farmers Bureau to oppose this. And, you know, there's people that are here, that were here testifying, that are members of the Farmers Bureau. And they asked me, they said, how can he do that? How can he represent us if we're for labeling? And we didn't even know that when we gave our $100 dues, that the Farmers Bureau does not support labeling. So I made a call, you know, I was wondering too. And I called one of the farmers that's involved with that organization that I know is for labeling. He's an organic farmer. And he said, well, Courtney, let me explain it to you. He said, you know, the state dictates to the county, and the national dictates to the state, and the National Farmers Bureau is not for labeling. So I just think it's really important, you know, that we understand, you know, where the Farmers Bureau lies here, and that the members of the Farmers Bureau, that they know. And also to know, there's a gentleman that also comes to oppose this bill, his name is Paul Coler. I need one more minute, please. And he's, he works for Monsanto, and he's also the treasurer of the Maui Farmers Bureau. So that, and he says they sit back there together. And so the last hearing we had, they opposed this, there's only like three or four people that come to oppose, about all these people that show up, right, to testify. And I went, they had a meeting that night, they had the reelections for the Farmers Bureau, and I thought, I'm going to go there, and I'm going to ask the people there if they know, you know, if they support the labeling of GMOs. And I got there, I was so tired, didn't have the heart to do it. But I saw, I saw Paul get reelected that night onto this board for another two-year term. And I just see, you know, this boys' club and these people hand in hand, you know, and they're, the Maui Farmers Bureau, they act like they represent like good things, and they do some positive things, but there's also this undercurrent that Maui and the world need to know about. And I testify for that today, and I testify for the support, you supporting the labeling of GMOs, because we have the right to know, it's pono. And I want to thank Ellie Cochran for supporting and introducing this resolution.
Thank you. You can go ahead and start your testimony on Bill 56.
I used to live up Pejolo Road for seven years, and there's some pools down there off Pejolo Road, and I used to swim in those pools. And then I saw, there's, there are pineapple fields, you know, that line, that used to line Pejolo Fields, I mean, Pejolo Road, most of them are, I think, fallow now. And I saw how when it rained, the water would wash down into those pools. And I said, you know what, I know how much pesticide they use on those fields, I'm not going to swim in that water. So the idea of having water from those Hapoca well to just come out of the tap for people to drink, I think is outrageous, and I think that it's very unsafe. And some of you don't live up country, so you won't be drinking that water. But I live up country, and I might be. So I want to support Ellie Cochran's proposed motion. This definitely isn't a new issue to me, as far as this motion that's being proposed, but I really trust Ellie. You know, I'm really glad she's on the council here, and I hope that she's treated with respect by every council member here all the time, because she is an amazing individual. I worked with her in Maui Tomorrow, and when she got elected here, I thought, wow, here's a voice for the people. So I understand people want, you know, they want their meters, they've been waiting a long time, you know, so find a way to do that that doesn't hurt our community by serving us poisonous water. And as you know, multi-corporations, they'll say, oh, yeah, we'll make it all right, it'll be fine. I don't trust them. I don't know why you would. So apparently, there's a crease, we can increase up-country capacity by using more stream water, take the water from a Hapoca well, if it needs to be used, use it for ag. Do not add it to the water supply that people will be drinking. You know, you have, you have mothers who are pregnant, you have women that are pregnant, you have children that will be drinking that water, you have elders, you have people whose systems are already compromised because of, there's so many, so much environmental pollution in Maui. It's really sad. You know, you have the cane burning, I'm so glad that we heard testimony on that today. You have chemtrails, which have been off the charts the past week, and there's a clean air ordinance that Dr. Lauren Pang is helping with on that, you know, so that people don't have the right to spray us with chemicals and aluminum for geoengineering. These are important issues. You are informed, please make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Brook. Mr. Clerk.
Next person to testify, Paul Kaler, testifying on Bill 56 and County Communication 11-257, followed by Keith Rainey.
Aloha, Chairman Teo, Vice Chair Pontanella, members of the council. My name is Paul Kaler. I'm the Director of Hawaii Community Affairs for Monsanto, and I'm here testifying in strong support of allowing the use of the Hapoca wells. In the short 20 years since I first came to the islands, we've witnessed, or I've witnessed a great deal of the population growth that's taken place statewide, certainly here on Maui as well. Many residents on Maui witness this firsthand and can speak to that much more eloquently than I. For example, since 1960, our population here on Maui has increased almost 500%. We're approaching 145,000 residents, and when you add in the visitor count to that, we're at 190,000. Along with this growth, the water infrastructure that's been in place on Maui for the past 50 years has not kept pace with the same increase in population. So it's obvious that water source development has not kept pace with this increase in visitors as well as residents. And nowhere is this lack of source development more apparent than in the up-country area where I live. Many may, it was surprising to me and many others that the agriculture is no longer the largest customer of the border water supply on the up-country system. As Maui strives to support a more vibrant agricultural industry, including more locally-produced crops and livestock, the water sources needed to support both ag and residential needs to be addressed. Sadly, much of the water in the up-country system that's now being redirected to residential had to come from someplace, and all too often, it came from displaced farmers and ranchers who left the industry, finding it too commercially risky to continue their operations. If we truly believe and are committed to supporting our up-country farmers and ranchers, we must reverse this disturbing trend and move to help develop new water sources. Expanding water sources will help provide more affordable, reliable, and consistent water for all up-country users, and will help reduce the risks inherent in crop and livestock production. Open, green pastoral setting that we all enjoy up-country and visitors alike certainly will benefit from the expanded water source development. With proper treatment, as has been successfully demonstrated both here in Hawaii, on Maui, and elsewhere, the Hapoca wells can safely be used. We respectfully request that we support the repeal of the existing ordinance and support the expanded use of the Hapoca wells. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. You may, you may continue your testimony regarding 11-257.
Thank you, Chair. Again, Paul Kaler, Community Affairs Manager for Monsanto Hawaii. You have my written testimony in opposition to this reso. I'm also offering for your consideration, and I'll leave 15 copies of these things with the clerk. Some pros and cons, you might help provide a little bit more information for you as you weigh the measure before you today. I recognize the topic of food labeling stirs a great deal of heartfelt and real emotion. After all, food and food production is a central part of all of our lives. The question before you today should be approached with a great deal of careful thought and consideration. In previous testimony heard on the very topic, some today and some in previous testimony, four main themes often emerge, and I'd like to touch on each one of those four briefly. Number one, food labeling in the U.S. Number two, consumer choice or the right to know. Number three, health and safety of biotech or GMO. And number four, adoption of biotech or GMO worldwide. In a seven-page testimony delivered before the Committee on Government Reform, U.S. House of Representatives, Dr. Robert Brackett, Director of the Center for Food Safety and Applied Nutrition of the FDA, said in part relative to food labeling, quote, "FDA does not require labeling to indicate whether a food or food ingredient is a bioengineered product, just as it does not require labeling to indicate which conventional breeding method was used in developing a food plant. Rather, any significant differences in the food itself have to be disclosed in labeling," unquote. The second point, choice. The USDA through the National Organic Program already has a mechanism in place via the USDA Certified Organic Label, where a consumer who wants to choose foods that were produced without certain pesticides, fertilizers, or GMO ingredients can already do so. For example, you can go today into the supermarket in Foodland and Safeway and find foods labeled as certified organic or even GMO free. Therefore, special mandatory labels for GMO foods would not only be costly, but also unnecessary and redundant. Topic of safety. Following extensive safety studies by over 30 regulatory agencies in 22 different countries, plus mainstream scientific authorities in the U.S. and around the world, these groups have stated that biotech crops are as safe as conventional foods. Even the historically skeptical European Commission, after an extensive review of 15 years of research by 400 scientific teams, stated, quote, "Research on GMO plants and derived products so far developed and marketed has not shown any new risks on human health or the environment. Indeed, this more precise technology has provided greater regulatory scrutiny and made them even safer than conventional plants and food." Adoption. 2010 marked the 15th anniversary of the commercialization of biotech crops around the world. Today, a record 15.4 million farmers in 29 different countries plant 365 million acres, with the U.S. planting less than half of that total. One more minute. It's noteworthy to mention, 14.4 million of these farmers, or 90%, come from small developed countries, not just in the U.S. Another thing to note, 29 countries plant, another 30 approve the importation of biotech into their country, so for a total of 60 countries around the world. This rapid acceptance of biotech crops has made them the fastest-adopted crop technology in the history of modern agriculture. Mahalo for the chance to testify.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaler, for being here.
Yes.
And I'm just, so I wanted to address your testimony with the water. I think you testified on water first.
Yes.
And you mentioned delivery system not keeping pace. And I think in relation to, is that what your relation is to why ag is no longer, ag water use is no longer the top use up-country?
Well, I think the previous testifier mentioned that I serve on the Maui County Farm Bureau, and I serve as treasurer. I live also up-country. Every year, up-country residents, those of you here know full well, oftentimes, we have to go through a water moratorium, mandatory water reduction, or a suggested water reduction. Farmers and ranchers can't stop watering or stop feeding livestock water. And so with that risk, many of the farmers that I've known personally, who've been associated with Maui County Farm Bureau, rather than assume that risk, have left farming. And it's not necessarily because the water system has failed to deliver them quality water, the water system has failed to deliver them water, period. So I think additional sources, and that's what I'm proposing and endorsing, additional source development for farmers and ranchers, because while we may be able to go drink other sources of water by coming down-country, farmers up-country, trucking water uphill would be cost prohibitive for them, and for ranchers, the same thing would be true. So source development is what I'm advocating.
And a follow-up, Chair.
Go ahead.
And this antiquated old delivery system, do you not feel, do you think there's potential to upgrade, fixing, and making that much more, you know, a productive source?
Well, I think any delivery system, over time, stands improvement, and a system that's been in place for as long as the up-country system has, certainly can be improved in places. Me personally, our home, we don't have water pressure at times that is sufficient to even take a shower, let alone feed livestock or irrigate crops. So certainly, delivery systems, over time, do fall into disrepair and need to be addressed, especially if the delivery system that was put in place served a number that was 50 years ago adequate, and today is far from being adequate in terms of the needs up-country, both from farmers and residential.
And, sorry, one more, Chair. You know, you mentioned affordability and safe, and you didn't, you said affordability and consistency with water.
Water.
But you didn't mention, like, safety, I guess it's not really a concern.
Is the people who are Maui counties...
...to have it be portent that it's, that it's safe?
Well, I think...
So, or you may have mentioned with proper treatment, you believe it will be to safe standards.
Correct.
What, and you're here, I assume, because I heard you refer to other testifiers. There was some testimony this morning saying, we don't know what it is. So what is, how do you, how do you feel that if we don't know what we're treating, how is it safe?
Let me answer that this way. I was fortunate to have grown up on a farm. It wasn't here in Hawaii, it was on the mainland in Oregon, a family farm that's still in our family. When we bought the farm, when my, sorry, when my great-great-grandfather bought that farm, there was a well on the farm that you drew water from via a winch. It was literally a well that was dug in the ground. My grandfather farmed that farm, and when my dad and I started farming that farm, we had that same well. Obviously, we needed to have a different source of water delivered to our house, because if you have a well and you have no water source in your house, you have no indoor plumbing, okay? So we had literally no indoor plumbing for a long time. The water that came from that well also was disturbingly colored. We put in place what was called a granulator, a granulated activated charcoal filter, and prior to that filter, another coarser filter that took out the sediment from that well, and it became safe to use based on the Health Department standards in Oregon at the time. Today, that same technology, whether it's granulated activated carbon or reverse osmosis, I'm certain can be put in place and make water sources safe to drink.
Thank you, and I too live that way currently. Chair, can I question on the labeling, his labeling testimony?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And on the part of labeling, you know, you mentioned that people already have that freedom of choice because they're stamped organic, or they're stamped non-GMO or GMO free.
Yes.
And I'm just curious why Monsanto feels that they shouldn't be responsible in designing, you know, stamping theirs, that it is GMO? And you're sort of just laying it on these other companies to state that it isn't what your product is. I'm not sure if you are aware of Mr. Kobayashi's testimony in the comparison on who figured out how much the actual pricing of labeling would be, which is not that astronomical. So I just kind of want a feedback from the company on that, you know, because you touched upon, well, people already have a choice, because they can read the labels and it'll state organic or not.
Okay, I think there's a couple of questions there. Let me try to rephrase and make sure that I'm answering the ones that you're posing. The position on a company such as Monsanto on labeling of foods that contain biotech ingredients, correct? Is that one? Okay. We subscribe to and abide by the laws of the United States of America, and currently, the laws are based on what's called a product-based system. In other words, it doesn't matter necessarily how the product is developed in terms of grown, its farming practice, if the product is the same nutritionally, allergenicity-wise, nutritionally, food, food is food is food. And so from the standpoint of labeling, the current laws of the United States are that the process doesn't necessarily matter. If the food is as safe as every other part of agriculture, then it doesn't require a special label. Now, if a food manufacturer, such as, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but I'll just use this as an example, let's say if General Foods or Kraft choose to voluntarily label their food as GMO free, that is perfectly legal. And if they choose to use USDA certified organic practices, by definition, that excludes GMO from the use of GMOs during that food manufacturing. So if, as a consumer, I purchase GMO-free labeled products or certified USDA organic products, by definition, I'm purchasing food that do not have GMO use in their manufacturer. So we will abide by the laws of the United States. In other countries, and we've heard that this morning, this still morning, there are countries around the world that require labeling of GMO foods. I agree with that. In the United States, they do not. Foreign countries have a different set of standards.
Thank you. And, I mean, I've been hearing testimony, three hours last time, we're going on several hours today, that there are concerns...
Yes.
...of safety...
Yes.
...and harmfulness, you know, possibilities. So, you know, to say that, call a food a food a food, it's all equal, it's all the same, for me anyways, it, I have doubts on that one.
Okay.
You had Dr. Pang here, he just, you know, he's, he's up with the times, and I'm sure you are too, but I just wanted to, you know, just thank you for your time, and, you know, I'd just like to see, again, the choice, but everyone play their part, you know, in labeling what it is, so we can better know what we're ingesting. So thank you, Mr. Kaler, for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cochran. Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Kaler. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Next person to testify, Keith Ranny, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, followed by Mary Cochran.
Good morning, my name is Keith Ranny. I'm an emerging up-country farmer dedicated to an organic olive industry. I'm a videographer, and my education about the genetic engineering of food came from my assistance with the creation of a documentary called Pandora's Seed in 2005 for GMO Free Maui. And that was quite an eye-opener for me. And I want to actually apologize for the testimony that I gave back in August on this very subject. I felt a little bit like it was a drive-by shooting. I didn't know how fast three minutes was going, I was reading very fast, and I was providing a lot of facts and figures about the threats of GMOs. And I, today, I want to just kind of stop, now look at my notes, and, and just appeal to you, person to person. And I'm already hearing that the council is really listening carefully to this particular issue that affects all of us. One of the issues that was just not addressed is the coexistence issue, so I'll just speak extemporaneously on that one. Is there any way to control side-by-side genetically modified crops with organic crops? And the answer is no, because we cannot control the birds, the bees, the wind, the rain, and all of these natural ingredients that provide the habitat for healthy humans. We now are witnessing, and there's a lot of activity around the world that is addressing this issue of suppression of information, over control by governments, and the corporate responsibility in all of this. And it's pretty obvious to all of us that when it impacts the bottom line, that the suppression of information is just status quo. And so my testimony back in August, and my fervency is really representative of what happens when you take the lid off of suppression, decades of suppression of information we have a right to know about. And so I'm a little bit calmer today, and very much appreciate your addressing this issue, and very proud of the people that've come in support of our right to know. It is the pono thing to do. Aloha.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Ranny. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Mary Cochran, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-hundred-and-fifty-seven and Bill fifty-six, followed by Bruce Wu.
Good morning. It's still morning, believe it or not. Now, they say that third time is a charm. Now, this is my third time over here on these H-Poco wells, and I have confidence that today, the council will validate scientific findings that have found much success in water treatments, for example, Lahaina, Central Oahu, and Leeward. Now, this has been a long time coming, and I applaud this council's responsiveness to the needs of our residential and farming communities up-country. Now, leadership is hard, and you guys know that, and it does not come easy. The arguments on both sides of the issue are valid, no dispute on that. For example, arguments against use of the well. The one thing about that is that they focus on what is, and the consequences that can result by use of the wells, the use of these polluted wells, is what is. On the other hand, arguments for use of the wells with the technology we've got that can make the well safe, and we've got perfect examples, Lahaina, Central Oahu, Leeward. So we know that it can be made safe. Again, leadership is hard, but that's what elective office is all about, isn't it? Making those decisions, informed decisions, for the good of the community. President Lincoln said it so clear. You can't please all of the people all of the time. But to add to that, you can please most all of the people all of the time, and some of the people some of the time. Now, this isn't just for the up-country communities, their economic well-being impacts on the well-being of the entire Maui County. When you look at the farming, you look at the cattle industry, and when I say farming, we're talking about big, we're talking about small. Okay? So they benefit, we benefit. Now, reasonable man may differ, but comes a time when you either trust the scientific data or not. Just as there are differences of opinion on global warning, despite the scientific data that there is global warning, this economy on the H-Poco wells is no different. You know, trusting the scientific data on global warning, our world governments now is taking steps to mitigate its effects. So in this case, let us trust science and what it can done, as is done in Lahaina and Central Maui. So please, at the end of the day, and I believe it's going to be at the end of the day, let us vote yes for the H-Poco wells. Thank you.
Ms. Cochran?
Yes.
You also signed up to testify on County Communication eleven two-five-seven as well.
Which is it?
The GMO labeling.
Will I test? Oh, that one. I'm going to have to bypass that.
Thank you very much. Members, is there a need to have any part of Mary's, Ms. Cochran's testimony rephrased? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Next person to testify, Bruce Wu, testifying on Bill fifty-six, followed by Ruth Dupont.
Good morning, Council Chair, Council members. A hard act to follow, that was nice. Except for that. Budget restraints. Kidding. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I'm not representing anyone. Twenty years coming up to 2012 is how long the up-country water meter list has been ongoing. We have the same problems for twenty years. If I never fix my problem, in two, I'll be divorced. We get twenty, I'm looking for you guys to, you know, come to some solution, some agreement, or help out the residents up-country. I have ten instructors that teach at MCC, and every instructor is a professional in that certain field. They're expert in that certain field. They're better than I am in that specific area, even though I'm a journeyman carpenter. So what I do to make my job easy, I rely on their knowledge. Because I'm smart enough to know that they're smarter than me in that specific area, and I trust them, because that's why we hired them, and that's why we put them in place to train the upcoming carpenters. And I have faith that when you get one guy like Dave Taylor, who I have faith in, who's trying to do a difference or make a difference for this water shortage problem we have, you gotta support him. I sit here supporting Dave Taylor. I sit here supporting the up-country residents of Maui, because I know I'm not an expert, but they are. You know, get the fly-by-nights that come here, telling me how good they are on a job site. I did this, I did that, you know, I heard this, I heard that. They'll be exposed in a day at the job site. But we need people with experience and leadership qualities, and we need the council to act. Because, like I said myself, I'm not a professional in this field, but we gotta trust the professionals. And I think we got the right one. It's the first time in some years that I've followed the water department that gets somebody trying to solve the problems that's been ongoing for twenty years. Twenty years. I was a lot younger back then, and everybody else was, so I hope and I appreciate if you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wu, for being here.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah. I recall relieving this meter list was also a campaign promise, too, so I think that's probably a good push to, you know, stand by that. But you mentioned about relying on people who are smarter, that have more expertise and knowledge and things. You know, I don't know if you're here when Dr. Lauren Pang had testified in regards to the water, you know, the safety and the ingredients, possibilities that's in it. So for me, you know, it's all about what's safe and what we're gonna feed our children and our community, things of that nature. He brought up some really key points about combinations and what have you. I mean, he's got that scientific expertise and background, like you're stating, you know, you're saying Dave Taylor does in the water department. So I'm, you know, I guess more of a comment, I suppose, but how do you feel about that when you hear, you know, testimony that sort of, whoa?
You know, what I remember is somewhere, they found uranium in water, and they treated it, and it's drinkable, and science, that's why. I can't testify to this, but the experts in the field, that's one expert, we hired the director, that's his job. And as for the promise by the mayor, I think everybody came out with that pledge for the last twenty years, including some of these council members, to take care of that water problem we had for twenty years. I don't know if it's a campaign promise, but I'm sure some of your council members right here, was right up there saying, "We're gonna do something about the up-country meter list." So we shouldn't lay them on that one person. Dave Taylor is the director, and it's his kuliana, just like it's my instructor's kuliana. That's their kuliana. And you can have outside people tell you whatever you want to do, or whatever you want to be, but he's the director, that's his job. So for me, that's who I trust, the director, and his expert in that area, in that field. And granted, you don't get anybody say anything, and you know what, that's your choice also, Ellie, and this is my perspective, that I believe he's doing a good job, and, you know, you have yours, so I wish you well, too.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Go ahead, Mr. Pontenot.
Thank you. Maybe this is just a comment, but thank you, Mr. Wu, for being here and kind of telling us, you know, who is the expert in regards to water for Maui County, which is Mr. David Taylor. You say that this problem has gone for over twenty years?
From, I think they had the problem prior, but the list itself came out in ninety-two, but that's the list. The problem started prior to that, so you can tack on a few more years. I know it changed over time, the waitlist. I remember on the planning commission, there was a different name, and it evolved into something else, but took years and a deadline prior to people signing up on the, on this list, so it's well over twenty years.
Yeah, thank you. And the reason why, you know, I reiterate the twenty years, because when I first became a council member, and I gotta say to Mr. Taylor, who, you know, spoke about the infrastructure and resources, back in the eighties, the county of Maui had tasked a consulting company in regards to doing the water study for Maui County. And that particular study had said that if we weren't ready by the year 2000, that Maui would be in jeopardy. So this is the effect that we face today. And you mentioned about leaders, you know, if the leaders at the time took action, you know, water up-country would have been no problem, but we didn't. So I thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Pontenot. Members, further questions for the testifier? Thank you very much, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Ruth Dupont, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-fifty-nine, followed by Kaniloa Kamano.
Good morning. I, I'm on the water list, and I am in favor of opening the H-Poco well. And we in Kula, the moratorium on water was in nineteen seventy-seven, so we have had our hardships since then. And we've seen Kula grow, we've seen the complete island grow. I just think that this is a way that we can solve our water problem, and please, open up the H-Poco well, for whatever reason, but it is something that is needed by the whole county of Maui, just not the residents of up-country. I'm on the water meter list, and I, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify is Kaniloa Kamano, testifying on County Communication eleven dash two-sixty-nine, County Communication eleven dash two-seventy, County Communication eleven dash two-seventy-one, Bill fifty-six, County Communication eleven dash two-fifty-seven, and Committee Report eleven one-hundred-and-twelve, followed by Chubby Vincent.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Council. It's been a while since I've been here, but really late than ever, I guess, but, you know, my sense has always been that I am kuliana. We use kuliana as a term for responsibility, but really, when you talk about the kuliana itself, it's the people that have land that was, that was actually given to us by the monarchy, and I am part of that generation. With that, we have laws that also came along with the obtaining of properties from the kingdom, which have transferred over to the county and state. They are in your HRSSs, HRS seven dash one, HRS one-seventy-two, these continue on. What this has to do with all the agenda items that I'm speaking on basically comes down to resource, how can I say? I guess, for the lack of word, ownership. I have, I have concerns about a lot of resources that are being used, because in essence, as kuliana, as a kanaka, and as laws that already vested me rights not only to land, but the use of the land and its resources, I feel it still deficient that the county and the state still is deficient dealing with us. They don't recognize us as who we are, and that we have legal claims to resources, that we have interests. It's already in dispute, that's been won in the Supreme Courts for access rights for use of the resources that actually get handed out by corporations that makes millions of dollars of resources that actually stem from the basis of the kanaka. But people don't realize, and when they hear us, they think that, you know, we're some derelict that stands on a beach and do nothing on there. I worked in this system in the state of Hawaii for the last twenty-three years. I've been a contributing tax member of this county and state since I was fourteen years old. My family, my kupuna, this county, this state was built off of their back in this sweat. And for the mayor to make comments that we don't make a difference, that my people don't make a difference, that is so wrong. People talk about their rights for GMO. I have a right as a kanaka. My family built this place. They built the chairs and the beaches, the people. So all these things you're talking... So all these things you're talking about are intrusive to me, because they go against the rights that I have vested to me. So when you look at these things, you have to look at it with a broad mind. Some of you were here when we came to do a presentation, and I almost stand, Chair, that you take into consideration, like all the people that came in this morning, they have rights. I am kekeoka in the ikapono. You have to consider who we are, and you cannot forget who actually built the county of Maui, mahalo.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, Mr. Kamau. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Chubby Vincent, testifying on County Communication 11-259, followed by Ivan Lee.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the full council. Mr. Chairman, may I have your permission? I testify on 259. I'd just like to make a comment on 56 at the end. Won't take more than 20 seconds or so. The reason that I am looking at 259 is that I attended every meeting that dealt with H Poco over the last maybe eight years. Everyone that I heard today and the people that spoke for or the people that spoke against have a right to their own opinion, and this amendment is exactly that. It's a right to an opinion. However, I have dealt with the council for years and years, and the reason for having a water reserve committee, or a planning committee, or a general plan committee, is to sort out, answer all the questions that come up. This question of the water is another, it's the same item packaged with a different bowl, okay? You've discussed this, it's been voted down many, many times, lengthy discussions. So I, in reading this, I see it being repackaged. It's the same thing. Water for the people to drink is the goal, water for ag and a backup facility, no different, no change at all. So I think, Mr. Chairman and members of this committee, that this amendment should be disapproved, because the work was already done in committee. And again, it's my own opinion, and I hope that you accept it as that. On 56?
Go ahead.
I would hope that you would pass on second reading today, because I believe all the answers have been put before you. The discussions over many, many hours have taken place, and it's the time to do it. As I said in previous testimony, this is only the first step in solving some of our serious water problems for Maui, because their economics tied to it, their jobs tied to it, their people's lives tied to it, the Ruthie DuPonts that have been waiting for years and years. Let's give her her wish before sunset takes place, okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the time, and I humbly hope that I have not offended anyone. Thank you.
Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran.
Thank you, and thank you, Chubby, for being here and sharing your opinion. I'm just curious, I mean, you're saying how it was overturned and what this and that. What about the 2006, I guess the original not fit-for-human consumption vote was taken then? So how do you look at that today?
I look at it today the same way I looked at it then. It was a decision made wrongly, and all the council is trying to do is to right a wrong that was made. And I will tell you this, it was a decision made out of hysteria. I can remember some of the members being up there with little kids and pointing to the council and say, "This child will be the same size when she's 17." Now, is that a fair thing to do? I say no, okay? Again, it's my own opinion. You've asked me why I thought that it was good then, it was good then, it's good now. There's scientific evidence that prove it, and until the law is changed, we abide by the law. You cannot go into a store, grab something, and walk out, because they're gonna arrest you, because it's the law that you can't do this. So why not apply the same philosophy to scientific knowledge? You want this thing changed, change it. Let's go to Congress. Let's work with the EPA. But until that day, that is the law, and the law says that we're in compliance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Cochran.
Chair, follow up. Um, yeah, and I agree EPA sets the standards, what have you, but again, there was testimony earlier in regards to, as we sit here and speak to one another, EPA has doubts and questions, and they don't have answers to some concerns that are in this community today about the water. So how, you know, that's where, how do you feel about that? I mean, are you that so confident that you know, even when these scientific experts don't know themselves?
Well, let me put it this way. I'm 75 years old, I've been around for a long time, I think I listen well to both sides. I understand where you're coming from, but my position is, I will support the law that is currently existing. The day the law changes, my opinion will change. I may question why, but my opinion may change. But until they do that, I will support the people that are put in charge to make that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate the question.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Thank you very much, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Ivan Lee, testifying on Bill Number 56, followed by Joanna Kamau.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, how many more individuals do we have have signed up to testify?
After the testifier, we have six more people to testify.
Members, the Chair would like to complete public testimony. At the end of public testimony, we will take our lunch recess, and we will reconvene.
No objections.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting, Mr. Lee.
Good morning, everyone, council members and Chair. It's an honor and privilege again to be, stand before you and testify on behalf of the H Poco wells. I live in the upper Upcountry area, the top of Kokomo Road, on my family, I guess you'd say, property. My mom had a house in the bottom, I wanted to build a house on the top, and I had to go through the procedures to build my house, and that's going to the water department to make sure that I have adequate water flow to my house. And I'll let you know now, when my first plans went in, they ran and they counted every fixture to see if there was enough water for my house, and I actually had to take out one of them. If it wasn't for my mom's prop, my mom having a water meter there, I wouldn't have been able to build my house. It makes me wonder about these other family landowners that have property and wanna build houses for their family, and they can't, because they don't have water meters. It's a terrible thing to think that you can't build a house for your child, especially when you have the property. Everyone says that what you need is your property, then you come to find out you need water, and not only water, you have to have enough pressure for that area. I urge you to pass this and open up the H Poco wells. I know there's been some talk about what happens when the filters, you know, when we have to pay for it on our own. I have faith in the water department in finding good water resources before that time comes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Joanna Kamau, testifying on County Communication 11-269 and Bill Number 56.
My name is Joanna Kamau, and I come from Wahee. There's a couple things I wanted to talk about, and I'll just touch on the GMO first. This body passed the GMO ban on kalo. It was something that not even the state accomplished, so, you know, that's impressive work for the county to do. The purpose was to make sure our kalo remains pure, unadulterated. It was a huge accomplishment. So labeling GMO would only follow suit that we be as, I guess, alert to the situations that GMO products could present. Okay, that's it on GMO. Water, water is always a real big thing for us, coming from an area where we are constantly challenged, and the challenges seem to be evolving. They're never the same. Every other year, it changes. But anyway, the Hamakua Poco well, that's an issue that I thought was long ago decided. However, it doesn't seem to be, which brings me to, I guess, my summary of all of these things. I've come to trust in the process of government, of which this body is inclusive. I felt like I've been included in the process over the years. I felt very empowered in the process. But when the process doesn't address our needs specifically, then I get a little concerned. When part of the process starts to become changed, I'm concerned about how that turns out. The change I'm talking about is when the process isn't transparent, and I'm not applying that to this board, but in our county governance today, there are parts of this process that are not being transparent. There is part of this process that is being very heavy-handed in the way it manipulates the powers or uses the powers of this governing entity known as the county of Maui. I'm here to support the process. I'm here to support the work that you do in bringing all of this information to our attention, and bringing it to the table of discussion, so that we can come to a fair and reasonable solution. There are always two sides of this argument, but I think as, as in the positions that you are in, you have to be a little bit more above the decision-making process, you have to look at the overall perspective, how this is gonna affect us, not just for now, in 10 years, in 100 years, what is this gonna do to us? And that's where this issue on water comes in for me. Unfortunately, I've not seen much done to see that water is taken care of, or that there is more production. You know, nothing is done to ensure we have more water, or that the water is made better. And pretty much, that's all I wanted to cover. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of your testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Joanna, for being here. I'm just, your last statement kinda triggered the thoughts about reactive and proactive, you know, the difference there, so is that safe to say that you're sort of, kinda touching on that kind of concept in regards to water?
Are you being specific to?
Well, just your last comment that, you know, you don't see us looking, you know, down the future to generate more, it's sort of like we're just attacking these problems as we go, because there's long-term solutions that can be implemented. So I just thought if you felt that we were addressing things reactively more so than proactively?
I think that you are trying to be proactive, but the end result is more reactive. I don't see enough initiative put into taking care of our water shifts, make sure it's more productive.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Pontenella.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanna, for being here this morning. You know, earlier I said that we, the county of Maui did a study, I think back in 1983, by Norman Seidtow's engineering firm, in regards to resources for Maui County. And back in 1983, when he completed the plan, he said that if Maui County wasn't up to par in the year 2000, this is a condition we're facing today. So basically, we as counties just didn't do proper planning, you know, since 1983. So I thought I'd provide you with that comment, because it kinda bothered me, you know, and the county should take full responsibility of not doing what they needed to do to address growth for Upcountry, especially Upcountry, because the study basically was predominantly Upcountry area. So again, thank you for your information, and I like this proactive stuff. I come from an environment that you need to be proactive to make sure that your customers are taken care of, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pontenella. Mr. Victorina?
Thank you, and Joanna, thank you for being here. And I believe this council has, in many steps, been proactive in recognizing your good work, your husband's good work, the many parties involved in Hawaii and Maui County especially. Would you disagree with that statement?
You know, I have to apologize, but today's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
And one of the problems that comes with birthdays is that you get older, and sometimes deffer. So I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying to me.
Well, that's, of course, you know, I'm always accused of talking too loud. I've never had somebody say they couldn't hear me, but I said my wife when she didn't wanna hear me, but that's another issue, I won't go there. The question I had for you was, this council, and you've been coming, I've been here five years, you guys have been coming over the last five years and longer, but more so in the last five years, whatever issues and discussions, this council, not only this present body, but all the bodies prior to that that I've shut on, we've always tried to be proactive and allow you to bring your issues up, to discuss the issues, and whenever and wherever possible, look for solutions.
Yes, in fact, it's been even more so. Unfortunately, when I first started in these discussions, I don't have the knowledge that I have today. So as, as time has gone by, we've been, become more educated about how all of these processes work. Had I this knowledge when we started the discussions before, yeah, I think it would be a different situation for me today.
Yeah, and again, what I'm trying to say is, you said, you know, the question was asked, are we proactive or reactive? We're trying to be, we've always tried to be proactive. The resulting solutions have been reactions to problems, that I agree, but that the problem exists, and that's why we're working before that problem gets worst, or it becomes untenable and we cannot solve it. So I, I wanted to make sure that was clear, that I think you agree, we've been proactive. The end result is reactionary, or problems that were brought out, that after the discussion, we were able to find some solution. So yeah, that was actually correct, we reacted to the problem, but the problem exists. When we started, the proactive part of trying to get to that point, and that's what we're doing here in, in, in these wells, and this county, yes, for five years, had no rate increases. For five years, kept status quo, and fell behind, and further, and further. And now we've had to do all kinds of things to catch up. We wanna protect your kuliana rights, we wanna do all this stuff. That's gonna take water, and we want to know that water is available in all farms, treated, completed, and given out as safe and usable water in all aspects, and that's what this is all about. Well, Joanna, I thank you and Connie for coming, because I treasure what you guys say in many areas, and we have discussed, and will continue, open dialogue. Thank you, Ka.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Victorina. Members, further questions for the testifier? Thank you very much, Ms. Kamau. Mr. Clerk, Lucy?
Next person to testify, Adria Marin, testifying on County Communication 11-257, followed by Lucien Dene.
Hello, my name is Adria Marin. Thank you, councilmen, for hearing us out. I am here as a conscious consumer, hoping that everyone would have the right to know what it is that they're buying. I find myself overwhelmed going to your local grocery store and finding one aisle of food that I feel is good enough to put in my body. Currently, an auntie, I would hope that my little niece only has the best. Currently, an auntie, I would hope that my little niece only has the best of products, and it is overwhelming that it would even be a question. So, I thank you for understanding the importance of what we consume. We are what we eat, and food should be our medicine, no longer the prescriptions and antibiotics that we are putting into our meat, hoping to bring out a better alternative. I don't know. So, that's all. I am pro-labeling, for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, Ms. Marin. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Lucieann Dine, testifying on Bill Number 56, followed by
Aloha, Council Chair and Council members. My name is Lucieann Dine, and first Chair, I'd like to beg your indulgence, I didn't sign up for a couple of other things I would also like to address. I will be brief on them, but for the record, I would like to make comments on 11-106, 11-257, 11-259, and 11-268.
The Chair will accept it if it's very brief. Thank you.
You got a deal. Thank you. First, 11-106, the charging meters for vehicles, what a great idea, and I think this is an example of being proactive, getting ahead of the curve. Most of us do not have electric vehicles at this time, but I know I would like to have one eventually, if I can afford one, and make my own power at home and charge it up. So, let's make the codes, you know, make that work. End of testimony. 11-257, you have three draft bills that are being proposed to send to the legislature. They're all good. They're all good bills, and I would move them forward. And I know that the most controversial one has to do with the G M O labeling. We already have similar policies in our Maui Island Plan that are looking at the same topic. Labeling is always opposed, it's expensive, and somehow, when it happens, it's not the end of the world and these products just go on. So, I think if, if, that was a good question, Ms. Cochran asked, if the G M O industry is so proud of their products, then label them as G M O, you know, the best of modern science. But some people are concerned that G M O is still an unproven technology, and there are plenty of questions and plenty of studies that I think should be honored. So, let's move this forward, see what happens. We all know it's a crapshoot at the legislature, anyway. 11-259, this is a proposed ordinance to amend what is being proposed in Bill 56. I just think that financially, we need to have some options here. When you read the agreement that we have with the chemical manufacturers, it's like, I think we got the short end of the stick. I don't know, I assume all of you have read this 1999 agreement with three or four chemical manufacturers that agrees to treat our water, but it's very, very restrictive. It only covers D B C P, and the Hamakua Poco wells have T C P, E D B, and D B C P, and one of them, it's my understanding from whatever tests are, you know, the most recent, which are eight years old or something, that it really has a problem with T C P. So, we don't even know if this agreement would cover it. So, it's like to think that these are the source and the one salvation for our poor people on the up-country list, I don't know, I think we should push for other solutions. And on to 11-268, the Heritage Hall. This is such a great project, I know you all support it, especially those of you with Portuguese heritage, I'm sure have been watching with interest, that this important part of our cultural and heritage resources would be established, while we still have the kapuna around that can really inform it as a worthwhile project. So, it didn't have exactly the right zoning to start, but it belongs there, and let's just move it through. And then on to my main topic, which was Bill 56, the consideration of passing the motion that you have forwarded from your last meeting on the Hamakua Poco wells. I would just like to point out a few things, maybe some of, some of the stuff that I've heard that you might want to be informed about. First of all, I'm sure you're all aware that water is part of the public trust, and that the Supreme Court has affirmed that agencies must utilize the precautionary principle in their decision-making about public trust resources, including water. And this was affirmed in the Waioa Holy decision, and it is the law. It is the law of our land. And this body has the power to set standards that go beyond the EPA and the D O H standards. I'm going to repeat that, this body has that power. It is the law. Honolulu Board of Water Supply has taken this step in the past. They have set higher standards, more restrictive standards, for both nitrates and D B C P in the past, when those standards were not being provided adequately in the other agencies' process. You have this ability. Now, if Maui is truly no caoi when it comes to our water quality, it could be assumed that it's the duty of this body not to be satisfied by the status quo, if better information is available by doing, going the extra mile, doing the extra due diligence, and finding out more, then I think you should give yourself that task. Now, why do people want you to go the extra distance on these kinds of things? To protect the public health? Well, for one thing, we keep hearing about the Lahaina Wells having no impacts, and we've been using them for years. Have we ever done a health study about the impacts of these wells? I don't believe we have. We don't know if they have impacts or not. We just know people aren't complaining. The history of looking at D B C P in Maui wells is not one that we can be proud of. In the 1970s, we were told by the EPA and the Department of Health that D C P, D B C P does not migrate into groundwater, period. By 1977, it was found in aquifers in California and banned. So, that was not correct. In the 1980s, we were told by the Department of Health and the EPA that D B C P does not migrate into Hawaii aquifers, because they were different. They both confirmed that we could continue using D B C P after it was banned on the mainland. Citizens contested this. They were right. In 1979, John Mink confirmed five out of 10 sites that he tested had D B C P in the groundwater. We were told by the Department of Health, it doesn't happen. We were told by the EPA, it doesn't happen. It was the law, but it wasn't right. And Mr. Mink's findings were sort of swept under the table for a number of years.
One minute to conclude.
Thank you. Let's fast forward to 1983. D B C P was found in Maui wells, and actions were taken to then ban its use in Hawaii. And it's the Maui wells that have really, you know, been at the forefront of some of this, even though it was found in wells in Oahu. Oahu acted and immediately shut down 13 wells because they had D B C P contamination. Maui instead did this bubbling process and mixed it with surface water, and we've just spent a long time in biting the bullet. Then come the Hamakua Poco wells. In 1993, they were drilled, and the county announced that they were free of contaminants. Citizens sued to ask that tests be done at a certified laboratory, which they had not been done at. When those tests came back, indeed, both wells had contaminants, and in big levels. So, maybe we should think citizens might know more than the EPA and the Department of Health sometime? I think the track record could lead you in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Ms. Dine. I'm sorry, Ms. Cochran? Thank you, Ms. Dine.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Ramonda Anan, testifying on County Communication 11-267,
Aloha. I'm a friend and caregiver of Ramonda Anan, and I'm speaking on his behalf. He's a little too nervous to talk right now. I'd like to say that I support Ellie Cochran's ADA bill. I've been working on it for three years. It's really hard and really dangerous for people in wheelchairs. He's speaking about the sidewalks in Makawau. And it's against the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm speaking on behalf of me. And I'm also a commissioner on the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. And can I have permission to speak on the G M O labeling? I support it with all my heart. Thank you, Ellie Cochran. And thank you, Dr. Lauren Pang, for testifying. I've been doing a lot of research on it for three years. And I really... And I've seen a negative health effects. In my personal life. And I would not use G M O if I could help it. But it's really hard to tell. When I go shopping at Whole Foods, it's really hard for me to know what I'm buying. And it would be nice to have a label. Even though it's controversial, please, please do the right thing. All of you. Thank you. And thank you for listening to me. Any questions?
Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you. I just have a comment, and I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, doing your part, and coming here, as difficult it is for you to get out and testify and what have you, but I just want to say thank you also, so, for inspiring me to move forward with this. Thank you, Ellie.
Thank you. And one more thing, please state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Tiffany James.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Additional questions, members? Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify is May Nakahata, testifying on Bill 56, followed by Warren
Good afternoon. My name is May Nakahata, and I'm the agronomist for H Hawaiian Commercial and Sugar Company. I'd like to make a few comments about the bill concerning the H Poco well. There was some concern expressed about the G A C, the granulated activated carbon filters that will, that is being used to clean up the water associated with the H Poco wells. EPA reports this system as being one of the best available technologies that are currently available. And I support some of the prior testifiers that commented that we hire people within the Board of Water Supply, Department of Water Supply, and other agencies to become experts in the areas. They, the county, as well as the department, when they make these recommendations, I know it comes with great thought, because at the end of the day, they become liable. So, they're not going to do, make these decisions without careful consideration. There was a lot of mention talking about the precautionary principle and the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. If you go to Kuniya, near the shopping center, and if you go further up, you're going to see big black tanks. Those are the G A C filters for the Kuniya Village. These people are using the same water, and, and the other compounds that were mentioned, T C P and so forth, are in that water, too. And so, these filters are not lying, they're not going to say, we're only going to take out D B C P. They're going to take out various organic compounds, which was mentioned earlier. And the other thing that was mentioned about, we should look at, we should do other alternatives, mainly take, you know, exchange water with the Waioa ditch. I'm the agronomist for H C N S, and as an agronomist, I work with water. During the summer, there are days when there's hardly any water in that ditch. So, basically, we're going to be looking at using an unsure water source for drinking water. So, in other words, what I'm trying to say is, if a bad drought comes, what's going to happen to the people that are dependent on that water? Right now, with the H Poco well, the well is a dependable source. Okay? So, I think that's something that needs to be kept in mind. And through this whole discussion, you know, I grew up loving science. I studied science, I went to college, and to this day, I read regularly and, you know, interact with colleagues that are all in the science arena. I really commend the council for recommending Genes Code today, because M E D V right now is trying to elevate the science knowledge in this community, starting with our children. And that's going to become very, very important, because to understand a lot of this issues that was brought up before us, including things like the precautionary principle, there has to be a basic understanding. And science, you know, through science, you have exciting things, like, just as we talk about the filtering of H Poco well, if you're in Texas right now, Big Spring, Texas, they are recycling their wastewater for drinking water purposes, and safely using technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Nakahata, for being here. You mentioned the G A C filters, and people mention osmosis. Do you know the, what would be the difference?
For different compounds, you would use different technologies to filter, because they serve different purposes, and I'm not an expert in that area. I do know that for similar water on Oahu, the granulated activated carbon filters are used, reverse of osmosis, you know, are used in different cases, but I'm sure Dave Taylor and his group have researched the different technologies as the decision was made way back when.
And a follow-up, Chair. You mentioned the Kuniya Village wells, and how, you know, these big old tanks, and they're filtering out the waters. What's the cost on those? I mean, if you...
Okay, again, I go back to what the consent decree was, says, is basically, D A was paying for the cost. It's not going to cost the county any money, as long as it is being used for drinking water.
And how is this Pai'a aquifer recharged?
I'm not sure exactly what the exact sources are. I'm sure some of our irrigation practices, as we bring ditch water across from East Maui, is recharging the aquifer. There may be underground streams that we don't know about. There's various methods. But I can tell you right now, we are so, so dry, unless there is a storm event, irrigation alone will not recharge, because we barely have enough water to irrigate our cane. alone will not recharge because we barely have enough water to irrigate our cane. So, there's not going to be enough water to go down to the water table.
So, just, Chair, with that being said, Ms. Nakahata, how is it that this, these wells are going to produce and be sustainable if that's the way it's being charged?
Okay, don't forget, this drinking water, we're talking about different levels of what... We're talking about our, the groundwater aquifer is huge. We're not talking about this little, how can I say, just a small area. The recharge area is very large. And so, basically, when they look at the sustainable yield, they're looking at long-term yields. So, in other words, they've taken into account droughts and so forth. So, yes, it is being recharged, and as I said, the water off our land itself, it's not going down because there isn't. But there may be underground streams coming into this and so forth that I don't know about. So, way back when they determined the sustainable yield, those determinations were made.
Thank you. Chair, one last question. You're the third testifier to mention the precautionary principle. What's your thoughts on that?
I think there may be places for the precautionary principle. At the same time, I think as people responsible for operations and like the county council and so forth, you have to make choices because precaution, with, under the precautionary principle, you may never make a decision. And unfortunately, life goes on, and there are people who depend on their decisions. The world cannot stand still till you do enough science to get there. You know, some of the earlier testifiers talked about how way back, they said it was okay to use it, and when certain people questioned the use of it. But if you look at the detection capacity back then with the science that was available, the detection levels were way higher than what it is today. Right now, you can detect to the parts per trillion, you know, the very minutia amounts. If we had waited till we get to that level, things couldn't have advanced. You and I would not be enjoying the careers you and I are enjoying today. I'm still in farming, so maybe I would have been okay. But for yourself, chances are, you would be out there growing vegetables or whatever because somebody else can't do it for you. These sciences are allowing the rest of society to have careers of their choice. So, what I'm saying is the precautionary principle may have a place, but we have to be careful how we use it, or we will never move forward. I mean, you hear of people, you know, to hear of people living three or four families in a house because we cannot provide homes for them, you know, or, and partly it's, you know, unfortunately, water is limited.
Excuse me for interjecting. I think we've run outside, so...
Okay, thank you, Chair. That's fine. And thank you, Ms. Nakahata.
Thank you, Ms. Nakahata. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Next person to testify, Warren Watanabe, testifying on Bill 56 and County Communication Number 11-257, followed by Michael Kovik.
Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the county council. My name is Warren Watanabe, Executive Director of the Maui County Farm Bureau. And I, you know, it's been a long morning, and we're running through early afternoon, so I'll keep my comments brief. Now, Maui County Farm Bureau does oppose GE labeling. And again, we, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this, and, you know, recently we've heard that there've been deaths associated with the Listeria outbreak on the mainland. Now, does that mean that any kind of farm input will be found to be associated with deaths or any kind of illness will have to be labeled? You know, we need to be careful where we are going with this kind of legislation. Regarding H. Poco, Maui County Farm Bureau does support Bill 56, and I just wanted you to consider what May just had spoke about. You know, we're going, if you're going to rely on the ditch and use, utilize that source or take more out of it, you know, Maui has been in a prolonged drought. We are still in a drought. If you look at the Hawaii drought monitor that was just released a few days ago, the drought across the state is increasing. National Weather Service has come out with their forecast, and we are entering another La Niña, period. So, I want you to consider those conditions also. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you very much, Warren, Mr. Watanabe. Mr. Clerk?
Next person to testify, Michael Kovik, testifying on Bill 56, followed by Vincent Mina.
Good morning, Chairman, council members. I have had a chance since our last meeting to actually read the settlement. Personally, I think this thing's a pretty good deal. This covers actually 50 potential wells on Island of Maui, not just the few we're talking about. It also, by my reading of this agreement, covers more than just the chemicals mentioned. And in fact, DBC, according to what I read here, it's not the one that Dow's involved, the Dow Chemical's involved with. I think that was Occidental. At any rate, as part of the history I've noticed of this over the years is that every time, from the 1999 study, people have gotten in the way of this, implementing this. The 206 agreement with Mr. Couch said, "There was no scientific reason for stopping. It was political." My question is, what did that, what does this delay for political reasons cost the Mountain County taxpayers? And is there liabilities? Do these people owe us money for taking these wells and losing six or 10 years of this? So, this agreement expires in '39. How about what we've lost already? Are these people that have fought this for political reasons, are they liable for these issues? Are they liable to pay us for what we've lost? Because they did, it, there's a difference between political and scientific. I'm going, these should be brought online, the whole field should be brought online. We should really find out exactly what's there, period. Mr. Chair, I have a comment on one other thing. Can I have it, please?
Which item?
1106.
Go ahead.
I don't understand why we should subsidize somebody's electric cars that passes the burden to everybody to help pay for subsidizing electric cars. They should pay the same rate as everybody else. There's no reason why people should have to subsidize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased?
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
The last person that signed up to testify, Vincent Mina, testifying on County Communication 11-257 and Bill 56.
If there's anyone in the gallery wanting to provide testimony to the council this afternoon, please leave the table in the lobby area and fill out your form. Thank you, Mr. Mina.
Aloha, council chair. Aloha, everybody. Hopefully, Phillies win today, Mike. I'm here to testify on GMO labeling bill and also H. Poco well. First of all, I wore a T-shirt today that was given to me by a co-star of the movie King Corn back when we premiered it several years ago. And in that movie, they, these two young men who were in college, went to get their hair analysis done and realized, and through their hair analysis, that they had 60, 75% carbon from corn in their bodies. And they went to explore what that was all about. You know, we're fast approaching an epidemic today, and that epidemic is diabetes, type 2 diabetes, from our young children. And a presenter at our Body and Soil Health Conference, Jerry Brunetti, was presenting at the Farm Bureau's convention a few years back when a lady from Hark got up after his testimony and said, "You know, I hear all you're talking about with this is corn and the problems with corn, but you know, the problem is our kids need to get off the couch. They're, they're just couch potatoes. They need to, they need to exercise." Well, what they, what Jerry answered, he supposed, he paused, and he answered, saying that, "I understand what you're talking about. You're talking about estrogen. But you know what trumps estrogen? Insulin trumps estrogen." Well, she got it, and she sat down because truly, folks, we're being oversugared. And GMO corn produces high fructose corn syrup. It also produces corn silage that feeds the cows to where the cows get sick after 18 months, where they have to be slaughtered. You'll see tractor trailers on the mainland of Arm &amp; Hammer baking soda going in to treat the cows to bring their pH down. They have E. coli in their gut from feeding, being fed corn silage to where their gut creates acidosis. It's too acidic. They're not built to eat corn silage. They're built to eat grass. Yeah, grass-fed beef, yeah. So, this whole idea of not labeling this stuff, it's unconscionable. We have to label it. I have children. I want them to know what they're eating, what they ingest in their bodies. I'm going to be 58 next month. I'm the healthiest I've ever been, and that's because of practices of being very conscious about what I eat. And on the H. Poco well, it's kind of tied hand in hand here. You know, when the expert agronomist was up here speaking, what wasn't, what wasn't shared is that the basal lens, you know, I studied under a man by the name of Glenn Shepherd, who's a geologist here, and he told me something, very few, a couple of statements he made that were most profound, and one was Maui's actually a desert island geologically. We don't have the water resources that Oahu has because of all the dike systems that Oahu has and access to those dike systems. We don't have that here on Maui. So, we're blessed with the fact that we have the richest agricultural soils in Haleakala, and we're cursed with the fact that we don't have the water resources that Oahu has. With that said, all of our wind abatements have been cut down on our North Shore. And those wind abatements allow the trade winds through our corridors, through the North Shore corridors and through the South Shore corridors, across the Esmes, coming through and speeding up. And what that does is that dries out our island. It affects the upper-level winds, too. So, you take that coupled with a monocroped system on the Esmes that will not, that tightens, and I did this demonstration in front of the council. Remember, I brought my soils, and I did a rainstorm on all the soils, and the rainstorm did not go through the soils that were compacted from monocroped chemically, petrochemically grown areas, okay? But they did go through the soils that were, had humus in them. And you know, we all need to have more of a sense of humus, right? So, my suggestion is that we take a look at the whole picture here, and the whole picture is our practices, our management practices around how we address our soil structure, how we address our agricultural practices will, in fact, then consciously recharge our aquifers. That's what recharges the aquifers. And case in point, Kohou Lave is lateritic soil from being compacted, from losing our top soils, water runs off it, okay? That's the same thing that's happening here on our island. We're not recharging our aquifers, okay? Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, can I take one more minute, please?
Go ahead.
I've, in my last, I ran out of time the last time I was talking to you about the importance of labeling food, and I, and what I was addressing was leaky gut syndrome. And there were, a gentleman made a testimony about pregnant women in Oregon having BT toxin in their bloodstream. And I was sharing with you that the BT toxin was getting through the gut flora into the bloodstream. Now, the significance about this, and I emailed you folks, but I'll articulate it right now. The significance about this is that the BT toxin, when it's genetically engineered, is on 24/7. In nature, it pulses. It's on and it's off. It's not on all the time. So, by get, by them finding it in our bloodstream tells me that that's genetically engineered BT toxin that is on 24/7, and now it's showing up as a toxin in the bloodstream. I'm not an expert on this, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, is there a need to have any part of the testimony rephrased? Thank you, Mr. Mina. Mr. Clerk?
Chair, there are no other individuals that signed up to testify.
Thank you. The chair will offer an opportunity for anyone in the gallery who had not testified already. If you want to provide a comment to the council, this is time to come up now. Members, no one advance, with no objections, we will close public testimony for the day. Any objections?
No objections, Chair.
Thank you. So ordered. Members, it's almost a quarter of one. We will take our lunch recess at, I just need to know whether you would like to come back at 1:30 or 2:00?
2:00, Chair.
2:00. We will stand, before the chair calls for our recess break, members, on our desk, we are in receipt of numerous testimonies, written testimonies. With no objections, we will receive them into the record. Any objections?
No objections.
Thank you. So ordered. Members, this council will stand in recess until 2:00 PM. We're in recess.